Call the City Council to order at 8 o'clock on Monday, June 6, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have 21 items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to please read Agenda Item Number 1.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, May 23, 2022.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda item number 2.
Communication from Council President Austin regarding the reappointment of Stephen Kerrigan as city clerk for a three-year term to expire on May 20, 2025.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to let this die in committee, but we need a city clerk, so I motion to approve this for tonight.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the city clerk for an additional three years. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Oram.
Mr. President, I commend you for the beautiful letter you sent recommending Mr. Kerrigan as our city clerk, and I agree with you 100% on his availability, the courteousness you get at his office, but more important, how fast he can move our meeting with you when he speed reads. I welcome him back. I hope we all feel the same way.
Thank you, Counselor Oram, but I must admit, I had some assistance. Matter of fact, an entire edit of the letter by Ms. Karen, so the acknowledgement goes to Karen. Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Steve has done an outstanding job as city clerk and appreciate his leadership for the department. Seems that he has lost something, and it seemed to be since he moved to Schuylsburg. I think it's hard to stuck here, but, you know, aside from that, he's great.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. Anyone else on the motion to approve the city clerk for an additional three years? All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved 11-0. Congratulations, Stephen. And Wilson Breeze, the big guy. Agenda item number 3.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $6,300, which moves funds from Veterans Benefits to Executive Secretary to cover the vacation and sick leave payout for an employee.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing that the funds are there available, my motion would be to approve the transfer request in the amount of $6,300, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer of $6,300. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the transfer's approved 11-0. Agenda item number 4.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding a proposed zoning map amendment for parcels of land located on Jefferson Street and a small portion of Lincoln Street in proper legal form. Order number 2122-1008475E.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you. I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Please let the record reflect Counselor Dumas will abstain from participating in this item. Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this to item number 21 on our agenda.
Motion made and seconded to move this item to Agenda Item Number 21. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 10-0-1 to move to Agenda Item Number 21. Agenda item number 5.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding the petition of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, DBA AT&amp;T, for grant of location for one small cell wireless facility to be located on an existing pole within the public right-of-way in the vicinity of 241 Forest Street in proper legal form. Order number 22-1008558C.
Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please move this to item 18 on our agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded to move this item to Agenda Item Number 18. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is moved to Agenda Item 18, 11-0. Agenda item number 6.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding special permit from Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, to install a new stealth wireless communication facility, including an 80-foot stealth pole with accessory ground equipment at 739 to 769 Donald J. Lynch Boulevard in proper legal form. Order number 22-1008570B.
Counselor Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Please move this to Agenda Item 19 on our agenda.
Motion's made and seconded to move this item to Agenda Item 19. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is moved to Agenda Item 19, 11-0. Agenda item number 7.
Communication from Police Chief David Georgie regarding detailed police officers pursuant to special permit, condition number 14, for VD Naturals LLC, DBA COSA, at 505 Boston Post Road West. Order number 1922-107881G.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to accept and file this, but I also want to make the public aware that it is a letter from the police chief as part of the special permit where they are recommending discontinuing police detail at the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Roby. Is motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the correspondence from the police chief? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the correspondence is filed 11-0. Agenda item number 8.
Communication from the Planning Board regarding a favorable recommendation on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 39, Neighborhood Business District. Order number 22-1008571A.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the Planning Board recommendation. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item number 9.
Petition from Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to relocate pole 13-5 eight feet to the right on Cedar Hill Street.
Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and also set the date for a public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer the item to the Public Service Committee, and we'll set a public hearing for June 27. So motion's been made and seconded to refer to Public Service with a public hearing on June 27. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is going to Public Service with a public hearing on June 27, 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from Fimara Inc. regarding a request for a special license for temporary charitable purpose sales pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 101, Section 12A.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the request. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from Central Mass. Mosquito Control Project regarding personnel will be in the community responding to residents' concerns about mosquitoes on various states in June 2022.
Counselor Oram.
I trust our city clerk has already probably posted this, and it just shows the dates that you can request service from Central Mass. Mosquito Control, and it's posted on how to reach them at the city clerk's office, and they come in once a week. They have to modify their schedule due to June 19th, but as a whole, not June 19th, I'm sorry.
June 20.
June, yeah, Juneteenth, it's called, yeah, Juneteenth, shame on me. But anyways, it's in the clerk's office, and if a resident wishes to request individual spraying, they will come out, sometimes hand spray, sometimes they'll mount truck a spray, but they'll stay within the area of that person's lot. That's how they do it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Oram. Motion's made and seconded to file the correspondence from Central Mass. Mosquito. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President. Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file all the minutes from the Boards and Commissions. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed 11-0. Reports of Committees. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on June 1, 2022. We had four items that evening on the agenda. First item was Order Number 22-108604A-D. Communication from Mayor Vigent, revolving fund spending limits for the public safety revolving fund, the park and recreation revolving fund, the council on aging revolving fund, and water and sewer revolving fund for FY 2023. On a motion by Counselor Dumas, seconded by the Chair, the Committee voted 4 to 0 in favor. Motion carried. Next item was Order Number 22-108605. Communication from Mayor Vigent, transfer request in the amount of $1,735,807, which moves funds from and to various accounts as outlined to cover expenses for several departments for the remainder of fiscal year 2022. On a motion by Counsel Perlman, seconded by the Chair, motion carried 4 to 0. And I will be asking for a suspension on that one, Mr. President. Next item was Order Number 22-108611. Communication from Mayor Vigent, grant acceptance in the amount of $219,982 from the Community Compact Cabinet's municipal fiber program awarded to information technology to be used to replace the banner copper network lines and used for radio communications. On a motion by Counsel Perlman, seconded by the Chair, Committee recommended approval of the grant with the conditions that required matching funds be sourced from other than PEG funds. Motion carried 4 to 0. Next item was Order Number 22-108606. Communication from Mayor Vigent, transfer request in the amount of $1 million from Undesignated Fund to library building renovations to cover unanticipated cost overruns. Commissioner Di Val advised that the $1 million transfer is more than the cost of the estimated repairs, that the repairs to the historical Terracotta Main Entrance will preserve the intent of the project, that there is no danger of personal injury from falling debris, and that there are no surprises have been found. On a motion by Counsel Perlman, seconded by the Chair, the Committee recommends approval of the transfer. I will also be asking for a suspension on that, that item, and the meeting adjourned at 7:31 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Irish. We'll take up the two suspensions. There's been a motion to suspend the rules for Order Number 8605 on the year-end transfers of $1.7 million. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, the transfers, the suspension is approved 11-0. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of Committee to transfer the amount of $1,735,807, please.
Then a motion to, from the Finance Committee, to approve the $1,735,807 year-end transfers. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the transfer's approved 11-0. There's been a request for suspension of Order Number 8606, which is the request transfer amount for $1 million for the library. All those in favor of suspending the rules? Opposed, suspension is approved 11-0. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of Committee to approve the transfer request in the amount of $1 million from Undesignated Fund to the library building renovations, please.
Finance Committee's recommending the approval of $1 million transfer for the library project. Any discussion on the transfer? All those in favor? Opposed, the transfer's approved 11-0. Reports, Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs Committee met on Wednesday, June 1. We had one item on our agenda, Order Number 22-108571, a proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 39, Neighborhood Business District, to authorize a City Council by special permit to vary dimensional parking, design, and landscaping requirements applicable to a mixed-use development in the Neighborhood Business District upon finding that such change shall result in an improved design and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of Section 65039. This authority continues subsequent to occupancy. So the Chair had talked about the public hearing on May 9, where there were no comments, questions, or opposition. The Planning Board held its public hearing on May 23. We accepted that communication this evening. Counselor Doucette moved to approve the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 39, as submitted, and the motion was seconded and carried. The Chair stated the Solicitors offered to send a late communication, which the members of the City Council should have, where we could vote on this tonight, so everything would be taken care of, and we can start working on the special permit. So I'm going to move to suspend, to accept the communication from the Solicitor.
Before that, Counselor Dumas.
Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt. I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Let the record reflect that Counselor Dumas will not be participating in any of the votes associated with this matter. There's been a motion to suspend the rules to accept the communication from the Solicitor. All those in favor of suspending the rules? Opposed, the suspension is approved 10-0-1. Counselor Roby.
Thank you. So I'm going to accept the communications, and accept and file the communication from the Solicitor, which does explain that for this, it's six votes, and it includes the order in proper form. So I would move the recommendation of Committee to approve. Are you going to take them one at a time?
Yeah, we'll take, so first.
And accept the letter.
Yep. Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the letter from the Solicitor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the letter from the Solicitor is filed 10-0-1. Counselor Roby.
And then move the recommendation of Committee to approve the change to the Chapter 650 zoning.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee, which is to approve the zoning change. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this is a zoning change, so we have to go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second, please signify. The record reflect that was 10-0-1. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, please signify. The record reflect that's 10-0-1 again. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, please signify. Again, that's 10-0-1 in favor. Is there any objection to the ordinance being passed in one evening? Seeing none, the ordinance is approved. Thank you very much. Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to suspend the rules to accept a communication from the mayor regarding a, an approval from National Grid.
Motion made and seconded, let's see, so there's been a motion to suspend the rules to accept the communication from National Grid. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, the suspension is approved 11-0. Counselor Roby.
Thank you. I'd also like to suspend the rules to allow the engineer to tell us about what the letter encompasses and explain what we need to do.
Then a motion to suspend the rules to allow the city engineer to tell us all the nuts and neat stuff we want to know about this request. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Tom, wherever you'd like to speak.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you for the opportunity to consider taking this up on short notice. So we have a construction project going on down at our water supply pump station off of DeAngelo Drive, Cedar Hill Pump Station, and the project is the construction of a backup pump station. It's been under construction for almost a year now, and we're nearing the final stages. There's been a lot of layers of permitting. We've had DEP Resource Protection, DEP Water Supply, MWRA, of course, DCR, National Grid on their transmission side, because we are, part of the project is underneath some of their transmission lines, a high voltage line, so there's been a lot of layers of permitting, and we're nearing the end of that. Everyone's been cooperative, but it's been a long road, and part of the, what we need to do now is get the electrical power to the station. National Grid has been designing that, that power, because we want, we're trying to get redundancy as much as we can at that station, both from the water supply side and also from the power side. So we, we're running a new, a separate power supply to the new station. We've been waiting a long time for the design, and then we need to give National Grid easements to put their equipment on city property. So it's the, it's the new pole and the transformer pad. So on Friday, I finally received the easement documents, and we're at a point with the project where this is literally holding things up. We can't do anything else until we get these easements executed, because National Grid won't allow for the, the start of construction of the electrical supply until the easements are in place. So I hadn't done this before. I asked on Friday, is it, would this even be possible to get to the council for Monday? And, and here we are. So what we're asking is that the council vote to grant the easements as they're drafted in the document and shown on the sketch. I've reviewed it, and Jason has reviewed it as to legal form, so it should be ready to go if you see fit to take that vote, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have on it.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions for Mr. De Persio? Any questions for Tom? Councilors understand what the voting on, the voting on the easement to allow the electrical work to continue to get our redundant water supply up and going. Everybody's clear on that? I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to approve the easement as outlined in the grant of easement that's been approved by the Solicitor.
Motion made and seconded to approve the easement that's been submitted by the Solicitor for the work down on DeAngelo Drive for the backup electricity for our water supply. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Thank you, Tom. Good luck.
Could I take just a minute to say one more thing about the project that I, I don't think the councilors may not know about MWRA's participation in the project? So we, we, when we approached them about the backup water supply station, we asked that we could have a separate, a separate tap, basically, a separate connection into their distribution system so that we could have that redundancy. And as we were having those discussions, I put it out there as to whether they'd be willing to participate in the construction of that piece of it, and without really any hesitation, they agreed to do so. So they've, they've been under construction with a big project down there themselves, and they've had their own share of headaches, and it's been at, you know, considerable expense. They've basically built the tap from their 30-inch water main that we're connecting into, and our contractors have coordinated, and everything's put together now. So I just wanted to let the council know that, that MWRA has done that, and it was, you know, it was a big investment on their part in our system, so.
Thank you, Tom. Everybody good? Right. Thanks, Tom. Counselor Landers, do you have a suspension?
No. Well.
For your participation document?
Oh, you want me to do that now, do you?
Please.
Yeah, okay. I'll have two comments, but first of all, what I would like to do is to certify the fact that I, I did review the meeting of June 5, and I found it very interesting. It was kind of like sitting in my office at home and understanding it. So I have covered that, Mr. President, that I'm familiar with what went on and ready to take, you know, any votes. At this time, Mr. President, I'd like to also thank my colleagues over here, Acting Chairman of Public Services, John Irish, and my colleague, Counselor Brown. They did a tremendous job. I never thought in my wildest dreams that I would miss two meetings, and, you know, the city didn't miss out on anything. I'm the one that missed out, but you guys did a wonderful job, because it was a busy time, Mr. President. They moved on all these items that, you know, had to be done, that people were waiting for. So I guess we got everything, Mr. President, that works, you know, and that's why we have vice chairs and co-chairs and stuff like that, so I want to thank you guys publicly. I guess that's all I have now, but I will do, we'll have some recommendations later. Yeah, thank you.
So Counselor Landers submitting the documentation allows him to participate, because he wasn't at the meetings. He's filled out the form that says he's now watched everything that'll enable him to participate in the urban affairs and ultimately the vote of the City Council for the Lincoln Mechanic Street project. So just, so you want a motion to accept and place on file? Enter into the records, Counselor Landers.
That, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file, so we can enter it into the records. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Opposed, it is accepted and filed 11-0. Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. This correspondence from the mayor, and I'd like to suspend the rules to read that into the record.
Motion made and sec, oh, it's a bad habit. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, except the mayor's correspondence. All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Counselor Dumas.
This is for the title change for the Chief of Staff to the mayor and the Executive Administrator to the mayor. I don't see why there is an issue to resist to a committee, so I will motion to approve, unless someone has any other discussion. Thank you.
We can't technically approve, it's got to be advertised first, so if you want to.
Okay.
If you can make, you can motion advertise and put it on our next agenda if you'd like.
That would be great.
There's been a motion to advertise the request from the mayor and put it on our June 27 agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to advertise and then place on our June 27 agenda. Agenda item 13.
Order Number 22-108591, proposed tax increment financing agreement with Solm Tex LLC and LPCH 100 Nickerson LP. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to file.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of Committee to accept and place on file the communication, please.
Motion from the Finance Committee is to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item 14.
Order Number 22-108583, proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter 125, Section 6, salary schedule to amend the salary of the Sealer of Ways and Measures. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of Committee to approve the amendment change, please.
Then a recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve the recommendation. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, it's an ordinance change that requires to go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second, please signify. 11-0. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, please signify. 11-0. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, please signify. 11-0. And is there any objection to passage of the ordinance in one evening? Seeing none, the ordinance is approved 11-0. Agenda item 15.
Order Number 22-100, excuse me, 8582A, reappointment of Joseph Beesall to the Council on Aging for a term of four years to expire on May 4, 2026. Recommendation of the Finance, uh, excuse me, of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item 16.
Order Number 22-108582B, the appointment of Zella Heisch to the Council on Aging for a term of four years to expire on May 4, 2026. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
The Personnel Committee's motion to approve the recommendation of the appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item 17.
Order Number 22-108554A, petition from Mass. Electric to relocate and install a new pole to remove a tree guy on Amory Road. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion ma, the Public Service Committee, Katie, this is killing me, but I'll slowly get there. The Public Service Committee has motioned to approve the recommendation to, for the telephone pole relocation on Amory Road. All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item 18.
Order Number 22-108558C, petition of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, DBA AT&amp;T, for grant of location for one small wireless facility to be located on an existing pole within the public right-of-way in the vicinity of 241 Forest Street. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
First, you want to accept and place on file Agenda Item Number 5?
That, that's true. We, we do have item number 5 that we want to accept and place on file.
We, we do have Item Number 5 that we want to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded, accept and place on file, Agenda Item Number 5. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11:00 to file. On the Public Services Committee's motion to approve the small cell site at 241 Forest Street, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11:00. Agenda item number 19.
Order Number 22-108570B, application for special permit from Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, to install a new stealth wireless communication facility, including an 80-foot stealth pole with accessory ground equipment at 739 to 769 Donald J. Lynch Boulevard. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve as amended.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
We'll start with accepting and place on file, Agenda Item Number 6.
Okay.
Well, motion's made and seconded, accept and place on file, Agenda Item Number 6. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, Agenda Item 6 is filed. On the Public Services Committee motion to approve the monopole at 739 Donald Lynch Boulevard, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to read the conditions.
The City Council, pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, in the City of Marlborough zoning ordinance, grants to the applicant a special permit for construction of the use, a new stealth pole wireless, personal wireless communication facility, as shown on the submitted plans, subject to the following conditions, which condition shall be binding on the applicant and its successors and/or assigns. One, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction of all structures on the site is to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the City of Marlborough and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and shall be built according to the plans as may be amended during site plan review. Two, site plan review. The issuance of the special permit is further subject to detailed site plan review by the Site Plan Review Committee in accordance with the City of Marlborough Site Plan Review Ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit. Any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of site plan review shall be further conditions attached to the building permit, and no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant has complied with all conditions. Subsequent site plan review shall be consistent with the conditions of this special permit, and the plan submitted, reviewed, and approved by the City Council as a special permit granting authority. Three, incorporation of submissions. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application and as amended or revised during the application hearing process, before the City Council and/or the City Council's Urban Affairs Committee are hearing incorporated into and become part of this special permit, and become conditions and requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the City Council. Four, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant and its successors and/or assigns agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances, as they may apply to the construction, maintenance, and operation of the use. Five, all work performed on the site shall comply with this decision. No other building or construction or activity, including but not limited to any other communication device, WCF tower, et cetera, shall occur without further modification of this special permit. This condition shall be interpreted consistent with the federal law governing WCFs. Six, the proposed stealth monopole shall be painted the color Delorean Gray, as discussed and approved by the Committee and ratified by the full council. Seven, routine testing of the standby generator shall only occur during weekdays between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Eight, no signage or advertising of any sort shall be permitted on the proposed stealth pole. Nine, there shall be no climbing pegs, which would allow unauthorized individuals to climb the proposed pole. Ten, the applicant shall work with the fire department or at standing need to provide space for the attack, for the attachment of a public safety antenna at the top of the proposed tower, along with ground space inside the compound for its municipal radio equipment, should the city pursue attaching an antenna to the proposed site to improve public safety communications. The applicant shall provide this space rent-free, but the city shall be responsible for the cost of the antenna, equipment, installation, maintenance of said antenna and equipment. The applicant and the city shall work cooperatively to execute an agreement covering the terms of this installation as provided herein. Eleven, the applicant shall comply with all applicable conditions for WCFs on private property as set forth in Section 65025F, each of which shall constitute conditions of the special permit, except that the applicant does not need to provide annual certifications of compliance with FAA and FCC rules and regulations pursuant to 65025F1 and 65025F2, to the extent that those annual certifications do not exist. Twelve, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant and its successors and/or assigns, at his expense, shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 28-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed with no appeal having been filed and before the applicant has applied to the building commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the City Council Office, the Building Department, and the City Solicitor's Office.
Hold on.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on the conditions for the special permit? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Dumas.
Yes.
Counsel Roby.
Yes.
Counsel Wagner, excuse me, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Yes.
Counsel Orem.
Yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Yes.
Counsel Irish.
Yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Yes.
Counsel Navin.
Yes.
Counsel Duset.
Yes.
Counsel Landers.
Yes.
Levin, yes, sir.
The special permit for the Verizon monopole is approved, 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item... I'll wait for you. Number 20, you're okay.
Order Number 22-108586B, petition for Mass. Electric and Verizon New England to install a new pole and remove the old pole and install underground cable for city work around the pump station on Cullenane Drive.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm motion to approve.
Motion to move the recommendation of the Public Services Committee, which is to approve the pole on Cullenane Drive. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11:00. Agenda item number 21.
Order Number 2122-108475E, proposed zoning map amendment for parcels of land located on Jefferson Street and a small portion of Lincoln Street, and the recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve as amended.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Record reflect that Counsel Dumas will recuse himself for participating in Item 21. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I will move to accept and place on file the communication in Number 4.